All right, it is 5:00 PM on Monday, January 18th, 2021, and I would like to call to order a special meeting of the Wassa Board of Education. Moving on to Agenda Item 2 is Pupil Services Presentation. Dr. Hiltz, I'm going to turn this over to you for introduction of the Pupil Services Team.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Yes, as the Board had asked to hear more about the Pupil Services portion of the referendum, Angie Lloyd, who's our Director of Pupil Services invited several of our Pupil Services staff to give some more insights to the Board and the community. Just a reminder again that a full Pupil Service team, right? Guidance counselor, school psychologist, sorry, and I just made a mistake. It's not a guidance counselor, it's a school counselor, and I apologize, I'm going to get that right. Social workers, health aides, and behavior intervention folks. And again, the plan is to have a full team at each elementary. And I will say, we have talked to Mr. Beck about Hewitt, Texas, and the goal there is to have a Pupil Services person at all times. We wouldn't have five there at one time, just because the need isn't there, but. So with that caveat, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Angie Lloyd.
Good evening, Wassa Board of Education. Thank you for allowing us to present to you tonight. I do want to hit just on that last point on this slide. Our Pupil Services staff and Pupil Services staff in every district are pretty unique. Their day is not 7:30 to 3:30, as often is not the case with educators. However, they do respond when students need them to respond. So if a student has something going on at the night or the weekend, it's very possible that our Pupil Services staff are working on that as well. I wanted to give you a picture of what it looks like with our Pupil Services staff in the district compared to what DPI recommends. So as you can see, to begin with, we have school counselors. There used to be guidance counselors, now school counselors. DPI recommends that it's 250 students to one counselor. Currently in the Wassa School District, we have 25.2 counselors, which gives us an average of 321 students to one counselor. As we go down to school psychologists, as you can see, we have only nine of those in our district. So currently, we have 900 students to one school psychologist. It's recommended 500 to 700 students per one school psychologist. School social workers are similar to counselors, where it's recommended they have 250 students to one, and we currently have 827 to one. School nurses, there's no recommendation from DPI. I'm sure Kathy Becker will have a little more to talk about with this piece. Currently, we have four school nurses in our district, and we have hired health aides at every one of our buildings, except for just a couple who still have to share. We did that with CARES funds, and that was due to the pandemic. But if we look at our school nurses, who are all RNs, it's 2,025 students to one school nurse currently. I wanted to give you a little data and kind of show you where we are as a district. So every other year, we, besides this year due to the pandemic, we participate in the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. So in the year of, this is 2019's data, we had 1,522 students at the middle school level who took it. That's 84% of our students. And as you can see, there's a variety of different issues on there, where students identified that they would need additional assistance. All of these are covered by our Pupil Services staff. Our high school students, we only do one grade level, and in some cases, it's optional, so we have a little less data. We only have 17% of our high school students, so about 421 students. And as you can see, it's very similar to middle school. There's some that are actually elevated. And if you look at only 17%, you can figure that we probably have increase in those percentages, if we had polled more students on that. School perception survey, we wanted to get the families' viewpoint on these things. So we look at this, as you can see in the first sentence, families responded to student services questions as very important or important. If you look at critical thinking and problem solving, between very important and important, 99% of families said that they were very important or important. Again, preparing for... Preparing students for college or careers, that's a huge part of what our high school counselors do on a daily basis. 92% of parents felt that was very important or important. Same with preparing students for life after high school, programming for struggling students and students at risk of not graduating. 93% felt that was very important or important. And then school counseling at 93% as well. So then we asked the question, how is the Wassa School District doing in these areas? And we looked at the great and good answers. So for critical thinking and problem solving, we had 16% say great, 53% say good, 20% said that they didn't know what that meant. As we go down, it's pretty similar. As you can see, on the very, very bottom, I'm sorry, two up. So programming for struggling students and at risk of not graduating, 79% didn't know what that meant, so they didn't answer it. But then down below, school counseling, 12 and 35% think that's great or good. 34% didn't really know what that meant. So with that, I want to introduce our Coordinator of Counseling Services for the Wassa School District. He's going to talk to you a little bit about what our ratios are for school counseling in the Wassa School District, and then he's going to introduce some of our actual counselors to speak to you tonight.
Good afternoon, my name is Andy Grimm, and I am the Coordinator of Counseling Services. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about the School Counseling Department. I will start with the connections to the district's key interest and the people goal of attracting and retaining highly qualified professionals. We have 25 school counselors who average 13 and a half years of service to the district. I believe we are able to retain our school counselors throughout their career because they are valued, greatly appreciated, and feel supported. I would also like to highlight the wellness goal of creating a developmentally appropriate continuum of services. Our school counselors have a distinguished level of ethics and professionalism as they rise to our high expectations. The Counseling Department is aligned with DPI's comprehensive school counseling model, and we fulfill the state's standards and benchmarks by providing a continuum of services kindergarten through graduation. The one message I would like to share with the school board, parents, and community is the importance of pupil service members and the successful implementation of whole child and whole Wassa. The pupil service professionals are the glue that holds the whole child together. If a student needs academic, behavioral, social, or emotional support, they are referred to the Pupil Service Department. A school counselor, school social worker, and school psychologist become the expert in almost every aspect of a student's life. Plus, if a new school or district initiative involves social, emotional, or character traits, again, the pupil service members are the known experts. The Pupil Service Department is a key link in raising a whole child. I would like to invite a few school counselors to talk about their day-to-day operations, challenges, and increased student services if the referendum passes. We will start with Chris Ponsek from Lincoln Elementary.
Good evening, I would like to take a quick moment to thank you for this opportunity to give you a brief overview, a day of a life in, as an elementary school counselor. First, I want to preference that individual student needs, available counselor time, and program resources really dictate the breadth and depth of the counseling services that's delivered at each of the elementary schools. What I hope to do in the next few minutes is break down the delivery of the systems of the comprehensive model that Andy mentioned into the four different components, which include the counseling curriculum, the individual student planning, responsive services, and the system supports. First of all, I will start with the counseling curriculum. In my role at Lincoln Elementary, that takes about approximately 35% of my job. And what that entails is planning, designing, coordinating, implementing, and evaluating developmentally appropriate and prevention-oriented curriculum that meet the benchmarks within the model of the academic standards. If students need reteaching or more skill development, I will facilitate groups outside of the classroom to address student-identified needs or interests. This structured group activities enhance the skills and knowledge of those participating students. Also in this category, I inform parents and guardians on the scope and sequence of the guidance curriculum, so that we can share the same language between home and school, and those skills can be reinforced in the home. I foresee with a few, or, excuse me, with a full Pupil Services Department, that I could focus more of my time on career planning, activities, career awareness, exploration, goal-setting, study skills, and transitioning students from the elementary to the middle school. I also envision delivering more parent workshops and instructional groups. The second component, being individual student planning, consists between 5 to 10% of my time. In this particular component, I assist students with developing social, emotional, and/or behavioral skills, individually or in small group settings. I also am directly involved in the multi-disciplinary student support teams, which is also known as our Student Assistant Teams, or RTI team, which at those team meetings, we collectively gather, interpret, analyze, and utilize that student data to implement specific, what we call Tier 2 or Tier 3 academic, social, emotional, behavioral interventions. In addition, we monitor the progress of those interventions, and we make changes as deemed necessary. Also in this category, as a universal support, support that all students in the building get, is what we call PBIS, our Positive Behavior Intervention Supports. And our new focus, our new initiative, being the leader in me. So I'm involved with the Lighthouse Team Meeting, which really dovetails very nicely with the PBIS. So at these team meetings, we are planning, designing, coordinating, and implementing universal interventions and supports throughout the building. What I see with a future full Pupil Services team in this category, I could focus more time with consistent data digs, looking specifically at academic behavior and attention data, or, excuse me, attendance data, not attention, data, and share that data out to staff so we can effectively progress, monitor, and implement effective interventions. I also envision collaborating more with parents in regards to the educational and career planning, and doing more individual student advising, surrounding more development on self-knowledge, identifying student strengths, abilities, aptitudes, and interests, and long-range planning. Also, as I mentioned prior, really assisting students and parents with more formal and informal opportunities, support students in a process that includes problem-solving, decision-making, and orientation when it comes to transition planning from the elementary to the middle school. Responsive services is really a large portion of what I do at Lincoln Elementary. It's about 55% of my role there, and it really encompasses the whole child. So before students can learn effectively, the academic, personal, social, emotional challenges that interfere with any student learning must be addressed, and that's what happens in this component. So I am meeting the needs of the students by providing clothing, food, toiletries, assuring students safety by doing, conducting home visits. We also have a food pantry, a clothing pantry, and a toiletry pantry where students, as well as parents and families, can access at Lincoln. A large portion of my job has to deal with crisis response, which entails addressing behavior concerns, anger management, and conflict resolution, crisis intervention, mental health concerns and issues with students as well as families, social, emotional concerns, and any other family concerns that need to be addressed. Also in this category, consult and collaborate with outside service agencies regarding students who have identified concerns and needs. And at this time, a lot of referrals to community resources are then available to parents. What I envision with a full Pupil Services team is more involved, comprehensive, wraparound services. With the increase of follow-up with parents and outside service providers, more time would be devoted to monitoring and evaluating these services that are been implemented. More time would be devoted to consultation and collaboration with teachers in a preventative measure, and I want to stress preventative, to promote student development and help prevent crisis from occurring. With that, we would be clarifying issues, collect relevant information, set goals with families, and outside service agencies, implement strategies and interventions, and have the opportunity to really evaluate those effectiveness programs that have been implemented. Also, I would envision having a peer facilitation, where I would have the opportunity to work with students in group and training them to be peer mediators and/or facilitators. And then lastly is the system support. And in this component, I devote about 5% of my time, which entails consulting, collaborating with, in the building, within departments and district-wide meetings. As I indicated, the PBIS and leader in me falls under this category. Assigned duties, whether that be a recess duty, a lunch duty coverage, before and after-school duties, providing support and coverage for building principals when they're out of the building, professional development, staying current with evidence-based practices and any changes in the field. Involvement in building or district committees. I am on the leader of me coaching committee, so I, on a monthly basis, lead staff meetings along with the other coach. I'm also on the Board of Directors of the Neighbor's Place, and I do a lot of volunteering outside of the district. What I foresee with a full Pupil Service team would be more community outreach, more networking opportunities, regular and consistent opportunities for consultations with teachers, pupil services, staff, parents, and guardians in order to receive feedback on emerging needs of students. I would hope to involve parents more by educating parents about the scope and sequence of the comprehensive school counseling program, and more research and development by seeking more evaluative input from school personnel, parents, and students by conducting frequent needs assessments. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Angie Plisca. I'm currently a school counselor at South Mountain and Main Elementary Schools, and I too thank you for the opportunity to discuss and highlight the positive impacts the referendum could have on our schools. I am currently one of two elementary school counselors that share buildings, so I do not have the 120 or the 250 per one building ratio. Mine is more about 500 to one. With that being said, I would like to expand on some of the thoughts that Chris just shared with you on how things could possibly change for our students with this referendum. In academics, we would never wait for a student to have D's or F's to start helping him or her, but in behavior, that's what we often do. Currently, there are roughly about 35 interventions yearly put into place to assist about 9% of our student population. These interventions are primarily providing services to students that are in crisis, unable to function in school or in our communities. With additional time allocated, there would be an opportunity for the service, those students in need, and not just those in crisis, thereby increasing the number of students to receive assistance. With proactive services, we could use data differently. We do the best screener every year, twice a year with our students, and we look for those students that flag in the highest areas of need. Instead of looking at those that are emerging, or looking at drastic changes in numbers. If we were to be able to allow the time to do that, and time to allocate services to those children, we'd be providing them a proactive response to their behavioral needs versus reacting when it becomes too big. Integrating skills into the classroom is another proactive measure that we could do. Teaching students how to use the skills that they learned during the interventions that Chris mentioned for our Tier 2 and Tier 3 students. Being present to help those students integrate learned into personal skills during guidance class, both in the classroom and on the recess playground. Being present in the classroom to model how different behavior and management strategies could be implemented. Being present to help students integrate learned and how to interact with other people, and then needs-based services versus crisis-based services that were wrapped around self-advocacy, assertiveness training, self-acceptance, executive functioning, family changes, leadership skills, and aiding students identified as gifted and talented in subject areas that are more important to them, like grade and subject acceleration, anxiety, stress, perfectionism. Another vantage point would be the ability to create and maintain lasting relationships with our students and community. Relationship building is key in counseling. By having one's time allocated to one building, this eliminates the possibility of transferring as sections change throughout the district. Understanding the climate of the school and the social relationships between peers is crucial to providing a comprehensive counseling program. This is because a counselor will have better understanding of the needs of the community in order to adapt his or her program to address said needs. Also, by being more present, a counselor is able to build trust not only with the students' staff members more effectively, which would allow us to assist with school-based needs, but it allows us to build a foundation of trust with the community. Families feel more comfortable discussing the needs of their family and his or her students when trust is there. In Dr. Hiltz's message to our district last Friday, he presented this agenda's topic, referring to Pupil Service piece of the referendum, by stating, "So we can support our most struggling students, but also all of our students." By redesigning this structure, there would be a drastic increase in the quantity and quality of the proactive services, so all our students are successful. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jenna Troy. I'm currently the 7th grade counselor at John Muir Middle School.
I'm Susan Holster, I'm currently the 6th grade counselor at John Muir.
And my name is Heidi Schmidt. I am currently the 8th grade counselor at John Muir. As you likely know, the middle school years are very unique. Students are navigating many physical, intellectual, and emotional changes. They see the world differently, and they relate to one another. And the changes they go through are dramatic during these years with us. Unfortunately, not every student has support at home to help them adjust to these changes, and we have seen many changes to family systems and the way students respond to situations over the years. We are essential in helping them develop valuable skills. Given the numbers of students on our caseload, we serve between 330 to 400 students at each grade level at John Muir, we end up being very reactive to a lot of situations rather than being proactive, due to not having enough time in the day to accomplish all of the things thrown our way. It oftentimes feels like there is not enough time in the day or enough of us to go around to address every need. Since we loop with our students for three years, we have the benefit of working with and getting to know students and families well to help support them. Our position as a counselor is unique. We are an essential middle person, working together with teachers, administrators, students, parents, and outside agencies, trying to find solutions to help students be successful.
As a middle school counselor, there is no typical day. You never know what the day will bring. Some days, you might plan to meet with numerous different students, but a crisis comes up with one student and may take four to six hours to address that need. For example, we may collaborate with our Student Resource Officer and Law Enforcement, Social Services, and North Central Healthcare, among others. Over the past few years, we have seen a significant increase in students who self-harm, have suicidal ideation, or other significant mental health concerns. Although these significant crises monopolize our time, we still need to find time to accomplish other parts of our job. This includes academic and career planning for all students, managing peer conflicts, helping with homework and class concerns, addressing home concerns, conducting home visits, managing and planning 504 plans, serving as a resource for parent and guardian concerns, implementing state testing protocols, and assisting with class registration, just to name a few. We are not able to serve all our students on our caseload at this time.
In the past 10 years, due to time and staff limitations, we've become more reactive in our practice than proactive. Students today come to school with exponentially more needs and have experienced more trauma than in years past. If we were able to increase our pupil service time, we would be able to reach more students, reinstate small group counseling, help facilitate school-wide social, emotional, learning curriculum, and avoid operating in crisis mode at all times. We could have an opportunity to connect with and guide some of our populations that we aren't able to serve fully at this time, such as our academically strong and high-achieving students. We are eager to develop and offer leadership and mentoring opportunities for them. We would love to be able to support all students and families as they navigate these formative years, rather than only being able to focus on those with the most extreme needs.
Good evening, my name is Joe Keltner, and I'm representing the Wassa West Counseling Department. Thank you for allowing me tonight to speak to you. A Wassa West High School Counselor's typical day is based on a time of year and a programming needs at that time. Our demands are split between mandated programming, areas such as state testing, the academic and career planning, graduation, and more importantly, assisting students with their personal and social issues. At the high school level, students' rigor is increased as all grades matter and have long-term effects on their adult world. They have more stress placed on them to answer questions about their life after high school. Students live in a world with adult-like stressors while still navigating their way as a developing teenager. Many lack coping, self-help, or resiliency skills to manage and solve everyday problems, and don't always have a trusted adult to turn to for help. With that said, each day, our focus is based on the needs of our students, regardless of our plan or schedule. We transition to taking more time to assist students in crisis. Addressing mental health issues is one area that has dramatically increased the last couple of years, and especially in this time of COVID. More students are dealing with depression, anxiety, and other mental health concerns. Often, we're at the mercy of when breakdowns happen. Students come to us in total crisis and despair, suicide ideation, reporting self-harm, breakdowns at the family network. The relationships we've taken the time to build often suffer because of the sheer number of kids that are out there struggling. Often, our office is a revolving door, with a new student coming in just as the one before is leaving. We handle a wide variety of minor and major issues, and these issues are all dependent upon the student's perspective and view at that time. upon the student's perspective and view at that time. Some examples are schedule changes, grades, parent-student relationships, peer relationships, along with other external concerns. Counselors have to consistently be ready to handle a different situation with each student that comes through our door. While the support to those in crisis has increased, so is the need for support for our high-achieving students. They have access to more information and opportunities and need more assistance navigating everything that's available to them. In a nutshell, no one day in the school year is the same. The new services that we could offer to students, parents, teachers, and the community are all based on our goals. Our goal is to provide those services to empower these students. If our part-time counselor roles increased to full-time at West, we'd be able to have, with the decreased number in our caseload, we'd have the ability to build and foster stronger relationships with our students and develop more of those services for our student body as a whole. We recognize that there are groups of students that struggle with similar issues. The increased FTE would allow for us to run student groups that address anxiety, grief, study skills, time-management strategies, all those skills that we take for granted that are not being taught at home. Students, parents, and teachers will also have increased access to their assigned counselor, which is going to increase the services overall. Thank you for your time.
It's hard to be the last one after all that was said, but I'm going to try to keep it short. I'm Missy Kaylee, Wausau East lumberjack, hence the flannel, for 21 years. I've worked with many of your children up there. I've been around a long time. I have three kids also on the east side. High school duties, Joe pretty much covered a lot of it. Freshman transition, daily supportive teachers, kids, parents. Adjusting schedules, registration placement, graduation prep, credit management, identifying kids for interventions, advanced course opportunities, career services, career exploration, setting coursework, ACT, SAT testing, coordinating scholarship programs. We work with attendance and admin on a weekly basis. In the last five to seven years, however, more emphasis, as you've heard tonight, is helping kids with basic needs. Making school a safe place, delivering food, toiletries, being a mom, being a friend, many times just a mental health support person, just a connection, a positive relationship. We now work with law enforcement, community counselors, social workers, parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, guardians, to develop a successful pathway for students. Daily tasks have become ongoing. Without a defined beginning and an end, walking out of the building doesn't mean your work is done. Our job is ongoing long after the workday or the school year ends. There's been a shift in focus on mental health and emotional health, like you've heard, helping students identify tools for self-help, educating teachers about mental health and how the importance of a student's attendance for the day is more important than an English assignment due. We troubleshoot emotional, academic, social, behavioral situations at a frantic pace, which started long before the pandemic. Many things start and end with a school counselor, and I feel like we're a valuable part of the core or the heart of the school. If we had additional support staff, we can develop additional support groups with the increasing emotional and mental health needs of students. We could take more time to develop individual relationships with kids that are so needed. We could be proactive in planning for the academic and social-emotional gaps that are going to be created by this pandemic coming up. We would also like to invest resources at the high school to strengthen relationships with NTC and UWSP, looking at dual-credit opportunities for students to leave high school with college credits to be ready for the post-secondary education. I love my work as a school counselor, but I feel my effectiveness is limited more and more every year because of the increased demands on us. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening, and you'll now hear from
Don't worry, there aren't that many of us that are going to speak. And I was told two minutes, so I'm going to take two minutes, I think. I'm Jen Graff. I'm a school social worker. I've been in the Wausau School District for 17 years. I've been a school social worker for 20 years. I've been in various schools throughout the Wausau School District over my time. I am currently at Stettin and John Marshall Elementary Schools. So it's hard to say what the day of a school social worker looks like. As many and everybody has kind of said before me, it looks different every day, depending on the needs. It varies from school to school, depending on the needs of the students and the families in the particular school, so it's hard to really capture everything that we do as school social workers. However, the one thing that's a little bit different about school social workers is that all of our school social workers right now have two to three buildings. So we don't have any school social workers in our district currently serving only one school. Many of us have two buildings. There are a few of us that have three buildings, and you will hear from Kelly Perdue in a minute, who happens to be one of those school social workers who does have three buildings and runs pretty frantic, like Missy said. But one, a couple just points about school social workers. I believe that school social workers help provide an environment for students where learning can occur, whether that's academically or behavioral or social learning. School social workers remove barriers to learning for students and families. School social workers serve as that homeschool community connection that help make this all possible for our students. In a nutshell, school social workers help coordinate the whole system for student success. School social workers also are often that family voice for families when they cannot or do not feel comfortable. Typical things in the life of a school social worker would include crisis response services on a daily basis. We do an awful lot of work around attendance and students not coming to school, helping students be more successful with attending school, helping provide Tier Two supports in buildings for students. A huge chunk of what we do have always done is those family supports, working with families, helping connect them with resources, just being that person that they feel comfortable at school calling and crying to or yelling to or whatever that might be on a given day. We also do quite a bit of work in our department around special education services and serve on school IEP teams and do some assessment there as well. Like many people have already said, if we can increase our time, we would definitely be helping to be more proactive versus reactive. There would be a lot more proactive supports that I could see myself being able to be a part of, like making more connections with students. If I were in one building versus two buildings, I feel like I would get to know the students in my one building a lot better than I'm able to now, getting to know those families better. I would have more time for social-emotional learning development in my building, being able to be more of an active piece of that every day, and just the day-to-day goings-on in a school. When you're not in a school building every day, it's really hard to keep up with what's happened since you were there three days ago. So it would be nice to be able to be in one place to kind of be part of all those conversations going on on a day-to-day basis around students and families. Definitely being able to help more with the leader-in-me implementation in a particular building would increase. Somebody already said before, but increasing our collaboration time, just that time to collaborate with teachers, with our administrators, with families, with students.
Hi, I'm Kelly Perdue. I am a school social worker in the district. I've spoken in front of the board once before, just as a reminder. I'm sure you all remember me. I was here to talk about the peer program several years back, and I provided you with some information about the need for such programs in our district. Today, I'm here to talk to you about the needs to increase social workers in the school district. Our social workers, 10 of us with a total of 9.8 FTE, serve 23 schools and programs in this district. We are well understaffed in meeting the needs of our students. Today, I am a 1.0 FTE. I'm sorry, at the time that I talked to you, I was a 1.0 FTE for about 30 high-need district play students at peer. It felt like 100 maybe, but it was 30. Today, I'm a 1.0 FTE social worker for Wausau West High School, Wausau East High School, and Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. That means 2,700 students in this district have access to one social worker. Angie provided information that DPI indicated that there should be about a 250 to one ratio for school social workers. The School Social Work Association of America recommends a 400 to one ratio for school social workers. And just by comparison, in different schools, Ashkosh North High School, with an enrollment of 1,200, has two school social workers on their staff. La Follette High School in Madison, with 1,700 students, has two full-time school social workers and two full-time school psychologists. Wausau School District didn't have social workers in the high schools at any level until 2019. I feel very fortunate to be placed in both of the district's high schools this year. I work with truly who I consider to be probably the best administrators in the district, and I'm not saying that because most of them are in this room today either. And I work with excellent people service staff. However, with the limited amount of time that I am in each building, I know that I'm not coming close to meeting the needs of the students and assisting my colleagues in a way that I would consider effective. I average 10 hours a week in each of our high schools. The most vulnerable and highest need students in these schools have safety, mental health, substance use, housing, credit deficiency, and truancy issues, and these are issues that cannot wait for the day the school social worker gets to the building. These needs fall often into the laps of the community counselor, of our school counselors, who already have huge caseloads and separate roles of their own. Our school district currently has 119 homeless students. 31 of those are in the schools where I work. School social workers offer critical support to students covered under the McKinney-Vinto Act. They track families to see if needs change. They provide assistance with transportation, food, and other community services to these students. I just spent Friday my entire morning working with a homeless family who was, as we were speaking on the phone, walking the streets of Wausau with no food or shelter. I was able to set them up with temporary emergency housing and food. They still need assistance with employment and accessing emergency relief to help locate longer-term housing options, and that student has not been into our school building this year. Situations like this take hours and hours of time, and as these situations change quickly and families are transient, a school social worker must be able to respond at the moment's notice, not on a Wednesday when they're assigned to that student's particular building. I know when I have heard that parents and community members are concerned about students during the pandemic, and they're right to be concerned about mental health needs, equity issues, failing grades, and disengagements, disengagement among our learners. Addressing the issue of students returning in person full-time is only addressing part of that problem. When all students do return, school staff will be inundated with needs, and we will not be staffed appropriately to address those needs. Schools will need highly-trained people services teams to address social, emotional, behavioral, and academic and family needs. It takes having a full-time school social worker at our schools, all the more important. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sarah Gardner. I am representing one of two school psychologists for the Wausau School District. I, when I think about my time spent in the last 15 years or so as a school psychologist, I've been in the district for about 12-plus years, 13. And I will not repeat what many of my colleagues shared this evening because there is a great deal of overlap that school psychologists share with school counselors, with school social workers. But when I try to think about what a typical day would be, and I try to formulate that into words this evening for you all, I think of four main responsibilities or roles that school psychologists have, not only in the state of Wisconsin, but throughout many of our districts in this area. I think about tasks related to not only special education evaluations and assessments, but also students who fall under that realm of our gifted and talented. I conduct, I can only speak for myself. I work at, I'm placed at Horace Mann Middle School, Montessori Charter School, Stettin Elementary this year, but I've worked at a variety of different schools throughout the district in my time here. Upwards of 75-plus evaluations take place in the course of one school year. That is for me, and many other people in this room are a part of those teams. So tasks associated and related to those evaluations for both special education and our gifted and talented, as I said. We serve as part of many student assistance teams, crisis response, related to all the needs that our students have across the district. A large part of our position is taking place in a variety of different meetings throughout the course of the school day, whether that's facilitation of an initial special education evaluation, co-facilitation of a reevaluation for a student who's already identified as a special education student, or our response to intervention teams, of which I have four of those meetings per week in the buildings that I serve. Also consultation and collaboration with our educators, our people services teams, our administrators. We all work very closely with one another. And when I think about the opportunities that increasing people services staff could bring to the Wausau School District, I think about being able to just service kids in the way that that's intended to be, in the way that should be, assisting students in all, excuse me, all aspects, being able to be a part of team meetings, doing observations and not just in a reactive way or in a response to an intervention or an evaluation that I have going on. So I thank you for your time tonight, and I'm going to turn it over to Sarah Butcher.
Hello, I'm Sarah Butcher. I'm the co-chair with Sarah Gardner, who just spoke of the school psychology department here in Wausau. Similar to Sarah Gardner, I have been a school psychologist for going on about 13 years, most of that time here in the Wausau District. In my tenure here, I've had anywhere from two to three buildings at any given year. Most recently, I'm taking over or working with my other people service teammates in the area of early childhood, as well as holding a school psych position at Riverview Elementary. I also could say a lot about what's already been said by some of my wonderful colleagues who have come up here to present tonight, and in the effort of time, I won't go and belabor those points too much. I guess what I would like to say is each and every day, I think we come to school with a unique and diverse viewpoint as people service members. We have a list of have-tos that we must do as part of our role and function, regardless of how many other people are or are not in our department. Oftentimes, when I leave at the end of the day, I think to myself, "Have I got my list done? Did I get all those have-tos met?" And I can usually answer yes to that question. What keeps me up, though, is when I'm winding down at home with my own family, thinking about things that might come tomorrow or the next day. Those are the times when I sit and reflect and think how much more I could have done. Yes, I checked the boxes off. Yes, I had my meetings done. My paperwork is neat and tidy and handed in on time. I attend all my meetings. I facilitate them. I organize them, and I work with my colleagues, all of which who just supported our field and spoke with you tonight. What I would love, though, is to be able to leave at the end of the day and say that I spent more time with students, that I spent more time supporting the people who spoke with you today, that I had more time in my day to support new staff, whether they work with regular ed students or special ed students. I wish I had more time to support parents and answer their questions, to attend my own professional development for my field. With a full people service team or more teams of us added to this district, we can reach a point where we're supporting each other in a way that many have already said and I will add. I will echo, is much more preventative and supportive of staff, whether they're people service or not, and our students. I want to thank you for your time today. That's all.
Hi, I'm Kathy Becker, one of the school nurses here, and there's only one of me tonight, so you'll be happy about that. And I've attended lots of these meetings lately, so you may know who I am. There are four registered nurses in the district who provide care for 81 students in the 23 programs. Actually, illness and injury care is a very small part of our job. Nurses work with all these other wonderful roles. Oftentimes, we get kids in the health office frequently, frequent flyers, that come in with a headache or a stomach ache, or I'm tired, and they just want to take a rest. And a lot of times, they do have a stomach ache or a headache, but once we start seeing about, you know, three times within a short period of time, they don't have, they don't necessarily have a stomach ache or a headache. Something else is going on in their life. And it's my job to try to help figure out what that is and then help refer to all these other programs. I'm also very much involved in special ed assessments, safety promotion in the schools, crisis team, everything that everybody else is. Up until this year, there's always been a health aide, a full-time health aide at the secondary schools. But at the elementary schools, there is only a two-and-a-half-hour health aide. The only positive thing that has come out of the pandemic is that we now have health aides in every building. And I want to express my appreciation and relief that we have that. We absolutely could not have gotten through this pandemic without them. The health aides are in the schools all day, every day, and they are the first line of defense, getting kid, sick kids out of school and keeping them in quarantine and monitoring their quarantine. Without them, we would not have the low, or no, actually, transmission of COVID within our schools, and especially at the elementary level. We just could not do it with the health pairs, without the new health pairs. So I want to thank you for that. In the past, it was building secretaries that provided the bulk of care. So it's just so important to have these health aides working with and for us to help kids in the schools. And so we already have what we want. Couple of years from now, I'll come back for another nurse or two, but I don't want to get greedy here, so thank you.
All right. We've heard from all of our people services staff tonight. I will not rehash what's, what's on the next two slides. I think our teams did a really good job of, of saying what they could do if they had more time. I heard, I hope what you did hear is they want to be proactive. I heard that from every single one of them. They feel like they are constantly being reactive in the face of all of these new situations that we're seeing with students every single day. One thing I do want to say, you know, we have a number of people services staff here who did not speak tonight. They're here just to support. I recently talked to one of our attorneys for our school district, and he gave our people services staff one of the best compliments. He said the bar in Wassa School District for people services staff is high, the highest that he's seen in the state, and he said your people services staff made it every time. I thought that was an incredible, incredible compliment to our people services staff. So with that, I will ask for any questions that you have.
I just want to say that I looked up for school nurses, and according to the National Association for School Nurses, they recommend for a healthy population, one teach, one nurse for every 750 students.
Okay. Thank you. And we're at 2,025 students per one. Just reminding.
I know it's been the school psychologist number that we provide evaluations for the homeschool and private school students, and I'm afraid I don't answer this question, but the extra funding we get for that is?
Mr. Test, do we get any additional funding for that?
It's an amiable expense. You get the same as the expense we spend on our students. I don't know what the percent exactly is. It is amiable.
Okay, thank you.
Angie, I just want to thank you and everybody that spoke tonight for sharing all the information with us, and thank you and your colleagues for the critical role that you play in our district for our students. One thing that, just to reiterate what you just said, Angie, is we heard over and over the need to be proactive instead of reactive. But I'm wondering, Angie, if you could talk just a minute about what this looks like just different in the classroom? And my, I mean, I surmise there's less falling on the teachers and less classroom disruptions, less behavior, because there's that ability to be proactive instead of reactive. Because we heard a lot about time for the professionals here tonight and how they'd be able to develop relationships with students more, but I think there's something bigger here that needs to be clear to the community and how this does take a little bit off the teachers and students generally in the classrooms.
Sure, yep. I could talk about that all day long. Absolutely. You know, when they, when they talked about trying to do some proactive measures, ultimately, what we want students to develop is some sort of skill set in order to self-regulate themselves. So when we hear teachers talk about disruptions to the school day, that's often what they're talking about is students coming into the building not knowing how to self-regulate. It's very different from education 15 years ago. If we get those self-regulation skills set in those kids early on, their chances of success are much higher than they would have been without that. Right now, because of crisis and trauma and things that, that's taking them away from building those skill sets with those kids, it's taking those kids much longer to get those skill sets in order to be self-advocates, in order to self-regulate, in order to be self-learners in the classroom, which requires a lot more of the teacher's time. We've talked about it before here, you know, we have a number of crises that happen within our, within our classrooms that would, sometimes there's not a people services member at an elementary school at all. And if the principal isn't there because it's a day they have to be at meetings, or if the principal is doing something else, then it's on that classroom teacher to figure out what to do with that child until somebody can come help them. With people services in each building, we would have people to respond immediately and not wait for that response when it's needed, when the child is dysregulated and getting the rest of the class off track. So yes, in a nutshell, it will help teachers every single day.
Thank you.
Angie, just a couple of questions. We have the status of what it is today for our ratios. If this passes and we can hire, you know, per the plan, what does that do to our ratios?
I think I got most of what you said, that the clock was buzzing, so I couldn't hear it real well.
So it, you have listed here the, the current ratios for counselors, psychologists, social workers. We have a DPI recommendation. If this passes and we hire per the plan, does this put our ratios, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, otherwise I would do it, but does this put us at the DPI recommendations?
Yes.
Below? Where?
In some cases, it would put us below. It's going to depend on how many kids we have in the district at that time. But yeah, we would, I mean, we don't want a psychologist seeing 900 kids. We want them to get in that 500 to 700 range. So I, I think that is our target, to get within those DPI ranges. While also looking at our buildings, and like Dr. Hild said, you know, at Hewa, Texas, we don't need five adults sitting there when we have 90 kids. So we would have to figure that piece out, too, on where, where that additional support is needed. It's very possible that, you know, a school may need more than one counselor there, depending on what's happening. So we'll have to make, and every year we do that, it's based really on student need, and we're, we're seeing that highest need. Does that help?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And the, the other question I have, and I guess this is probably more of a general one, do we have a sense for how many or what percent of instructional time is lost per day, per week, per month, whatever, because of classroom disruption?
I don't know that we've ever tracked that specifically.
Okay, I didn't know if there was an industry or a district standard or something like that, because to me, that, and what, it goes back to Tricia's question, too. That's what I think parents and voters and people need to understand, is that while on the surface, it, a lot of the comments tonight were geared towards, you know, assistance for at-risk students or high-risk students and different situations, which is absolutely needed. There is clearly benefit to all kids.
Absolutely.
For that reason, and again, I, I try to think about how to communicate it, and the only way I might get it can think about is like, you know, lost instructional time, because we've all heard the stories and, you know, all of our staff lived through those. So anything that we could do along those lines, I think to communicate may be, may be helpful.
Sure.
Yeah, I don't know if we could track it here. We can certainly track things like referrals, but I wonder if there has been some, you know, educational research on that. We can look at it. It's a good question. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Angie? All right, well, thank you again, and thank you again to everybody that spoke tonight. We really appreciate your time and everything that you do for the district.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Three, Environmental Learning Center presentation. This will be Chris Nelson presenting on the changes at Wassa School Forest. Any questions that we may have for Mr. Nelson?
Yeah, thanks, guys. My name's Chris Nelson, and I am the new Environmental Learning Center Coordinator and Director at the School Forest. And taking a look at the learning center and why it came about, well, part of it was we were looking at our building facilities, because we are used almost every day of the school year, pretty much every day that kids are in session, plus all summer school. We try to get the kids out there as much as possible. And one thing that hasn't happened in about 40 years is updating of bigger facilities that the students use. Since the original Bannerman Hall was built, which is where the kids eat lunch every day and spend a lot of their time, we haven't had a lot of bigger updates. And one of the buildings we looked at was our original Old Lodge or Red Lodge Learning Center that was there, and that was brought out many, many years ago, and it's been there ever since. And it, it doesn't have a foundation under it. It's built on cinder blocks. It's very inefficient, and it's, it's kind of on its last leg. When you walk inside, you see the floors arching, and looking at the repairs and the money to repair that building, it just didn't seem like the best way to spend money, just because of how much that would cost. So we kind of sat down and started brainstorming why or what we could do to help the students and the school forest out, and that's where the Environmental Learning Center came to fruition, was some drawings on a piece of paper that we kind of kept building upon. And looking at that and how it would benefit the kids, one thing that hinders me each and every day and keeps me up at night is weather, when I have kids out there, because we have a lot of kids there at many different days and times, you know, groups ranging from 20 to 200 kids at a, at a time out there. And I don't have a lot of indoor facilities that if we have inclement weather, like really cold days in the winter, storms in the summertime, very rainy days to keep those kids inside and safe and out of the weather. If it's a beautiful day, it's great, we got, we got the entire property to use. But one benefit would be that I wouldn't have to worry about that. I wouldn't have to cancel days, because our calendar is booked all year long. If, if student days are canceled, I rarely have days that I can rebook them and add them into the end of the school year. So then those kids just miss that opportunity that year and wouldn't get to, get to visit and experience the, the school forest. So that's one big thing that students would really benefit from the learning center. It would give us a lot more space and classroom space to utilize during the school year, and our big one is summer school lately. We have almost, the last few years, 300 to 350 fifth graders enrolled in our summer school program. And we utilize every little facility we have as a classroom. We have desks and chairs crammed into little buildings because that's what we have, and this facility would give us a lot more room and a lot more access for summer schooling along with the regular year programming. So those are some of the big ones. Plus, with more classroom space, one aspect that I always wanted to bring about is getting more groups out there, multiple groups. If teachers want to bring their kids out for extra days, and I have other groups going on with more classroom facilities, those teachers could bring out and utilize them, those facilities themselves, and, and possibly getting more groups, because our pre-K through eight, all kids come out, but some of our high schoolers, I think, are missing out, and we could probably get more kids, especially at that secondary level, to come out also if, if they don't need my help on those certain days where I have other kids that I'm with at that time. And then with the new plans that we had put together and kind of have out there, another cool aspect would be, along with student safety, would be technology, bringing more technology into the kids. I mean, I want to get the kids and keep the kids out in nature as much as possible. But in today's society, having a little technology to bring what they learn and apply it inside the classroom would be really neat to connect with what they're doing in the schools and what they're doing outside. So another big benefit there. And then one that we get a lot is, you know, a facility that people are always looking to come out to, possibly have gatherings, community gatherings, business meetings. So this new education learning center also could benefit the community, where they could be a rental facility where groups could come in and do other things. Plus, we do get inquiries about out-of-district groups coming in and using our school forest, so that would bring more possibilities for out-of-district to come in and, and use what we have, too. So a lot of interesting things that I just kind of wanted to share with you guys a little bit. Any questions?
I think everybody has, you know, positive and local connection to the school forest. That part of the informational campaign is easy.
Yep.
What you brought up about how it is one of the most-used, if not the most-used classroom slash buildings in the district, I think is an important, I think we talked about it during the last referendum as well, but that, that's a really important factor to make sure that we get out there, that it's not just a luxury. It, it's used as much as any other classroom.
Oh, absolutely.
So it's as important as any other classroom that we have. I think that's a, an important thing here in the informational campaign.
Yeah. Realistically, the only days we don't have kids onsite would be like the first few weeks of August. The rest of the school year and summer is utilized almost every school day.
Chris, just one question. I don't know if this is for you or for Keith, but I hate to ask it, but I think it's relevant given recent events. Has there been any indication that the county is looking to make Bannerman Hall some kind of a historical site? Not that I've heard.
Yeah, thanks, Ben.
Yeah, well, I asked because it can happen. And the other point, I just wanted to reinforce what you said about other activities coming in. Based on those plans that we saw a while ago, I think we had talked about, I mean, there is a golden opportunity to actually make that a revenue generator for the district because of those outside events. If you hold corporate retreats, you know, if you rent it out to other districts or other, you know, what have you, it would be great to see a plan at some point that would, you know, shoot for a goal of, you know, maybe we can raise $100,000 a year from this thing going forward. I think that would go a long way, you know, for, for kind of community goodwill going forward, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Anything else?
I think pictures will really matter. It's one thing to talk about Bannerman Hall or the Red Lodge, but to see pictures of that Red Lodge, I know I went out there, I don't think it was last summer, the summer before, and you have to see it.
Yep.
No.
This is true.
I mean, it needs to be replaced.
Yeah. Yeah, and a lot of people have good memories of it.
The signs for the new lodge are gorgeous.
I was talking, as, as we know, the, the school, Wassa School Foundation is partnering with us, and they've done a lot of, of work in terms of, of marketing, kind of capturing those, those images and those experiences. And they reminded me recently that we should be tapping into those resources to include in our presentations. I'd agree with you. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Nelson?
Would you like to introduce your guest?
Yes, well, he's kind of hiding back there, but I did bring my former coordinator, Jerry Maney, along here. Didn't know if he wanted to share any of his in full, because him and I were the ones with Larry Seiler that kind of sat down and started this, so he came back for a visit.
Chris, I gotta, I gotta, you talked earlier about creating this plan on a piece of paper. I gotta tell you, the story that Jerry told me was a piece of bark with a stick that you drew.
Yeah. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Four, Refer. All right, moving on to Agenda Item Four, Referendum Communication Presentation by Diana White.
Good evening, board members. As many have said, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight and share the communication plan. You're going to notice a focus on new things we're doing this time around in comparison to November, taking what we learned in the survey, what we learned in speaking with our PTO groups and community members, really listening to what they had to say, and then making some changes so that our communication plan is not only more effective, but it reaches more people. So there are a couple of overarching themes I want you to be aware of, things that you will see throughout the campaign. And the first being all of the elements within this communication plan.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Diana. We can't see your screen, so if you could just tell us which attachment you're looking at so we could follow along?
Yep, so this would be the 2021 Referendum Communication Plan. That is the first presentation and the one I'll start with tonight.
Thank you.
Yep. So as I mentioned, there are a few overarching themes and key takeaways you're going to notice throughout the campaign. And the first being bolder, more engaging communication. So how do we do that? Well, we do that in a couple of ways with attention-grabbing colors. And I've included the logo in the presentation. It has the school district purple color, but we kind of thought outside the box. Let's use some colors that are not associated with the district, but that would grab your attention and stop you, whether you're on Facebook or on our website. Just really a way to draw your eye. Graphics in pictures and less words, because we know a lot of information can be really hard to not just digest, but retain as well. So that takes us to the next point, which is making sure all of our information is easy to understand and that we relay it more often. So on the next slide, what I've done is included some examples of not just the mailers that would go out. And I want to just note that there are going to be six mailers spread throughout the informational campaign. And they will go in this order: pupil services, safety and security, maintenance, learning spaces, tax impact, and a reminder to vote. And those are, like I said, they're going to be spread out, going out to the community every other week. So all of those mailers will have really easy-to-understand pieces of information and by far less words than what people saw in the fall, leading up to November. We've also included an example of a bookmark in there that we would send home with our students so that as they take that information home, they can share it with their parents and even for themselves to know some of the things that their schools would get should this referendum appear on the ballot and then pass. So continuing on with the theme of what's new, and I'm excited a lot about, with a lot of these elements, but one in particular is a referendum-specific website. So Cassie is going to pull that up. And our current website, we were kind of limited in the design and how we could share the information. So we've created a new site that really is not only easier to navigate, quite frankly, it draws your eye and really becomes a hub of information. And so when you log onto the site, which we're going to link in a very prominent way on wassaschools.org, each of the school sites will also have a link as well, that when you go there, any question you could really have by looking at the title bar there, you're going to know where you want to go. And in particular, what I want to point out is if you click on Proposed Plans up at the top, we only have three schools there, but if you click on any one of the pictures for your school, you're going to be taken to a different site or a different page within the site. You can see your floor plan, your site plan, and some of the things your school would get as well. We're also going to have school-specific videos housed on this website as well. So we're going to hear from the principals in the school about the things that they're excited about, some of the things they shared with you last week. So we're really going to have an emphasis on making sure that our families know what's in it for them and their students within the schools. So that is a look at the website that we are in the process of building and still adding information to, but that will be a great tool and resource for not just our families and our staff, but the community as well. So going back to the slideshow, just touching on one more point with the school-specific videos, our scoreboards at East and West have the capability to play those. And while we know amid the pandemic, there's not quite the foot traffic as there would be in a normal school year, it's still an opportunity to reach our families. One thing that we are going to do new this year is capitalize on TV and radio spots. And those will start right at the beginning of February, should the referendum questions appear on the ballot. 30-second TV spots, 60-second radio spots. Again, really tight, key messaging, things that the community will remember as they go to the polls or maybe vote early, whatever their preference is. And as I mentioned, the bookmarks and handouts sent home with students. So going to the next slide, this is what we continue, but with a few changes. We're going to do a full social media campaign again. But what's different this go-around is the elements are going to align with the mailers. So when the first mailer goes out for pupil services, that whole week on social media will be pupil service-related posts. So it might be videos, might be links, pictures, just to really reiterate those key messages and really that message consistency that's so important. We'd also have information in our individual school newsletters. And then I will create a district newsletter as well that gets into more detail. But again, is that same consistent message we've been seeing throughout. Working with the media, press releases, sending new information, interview opportunities. And then we know it was a little bit difficult in the fall, but we'd still like to do the informational presentations and really put those dates on the TV and radio spots and on our website so people know when they are and so that they're able to attend. We'd also record them so that they'd be available as well. And then for the informational presentation, we do have an example that I shared with all of you. So Cassie, if you just want to pull that up. And then, again, the bright colors, easy-to-understand information, not so many words, just really an opportunity to educate our community as best we can in a very easy-to-understand way. So that presentation would be shared in our informational campaign, and it would also appear on the website as well. So that is a look at the plan. I'm happy to answer any questions you have at this point.
Thank you, Diana. I do have a question about the six mailers every two weeks. Do you have any data or information that you can share? I'm a little concerned that 12 weeks and six mailers, that people might lose the message as opposed to, say, every 10 days and getting six mailers in 60 days, you know, two months versus three months.
Right.
And really making sure that that message is retained.
So we don't have any data. What we do know from the fall is that not everybody got the mailers, or if they did get them, they did get thrown away with all the mail that they got because, quite frankly, there was nothing drawing your attention to it. And what we would certainly do is send out the first one, maybe two, and get some feedback and see where that is at so that we know people are getting it, that they're actually looking at the messaging. And what we'd also want to do too, because we know not everybody got them last time around, is to post those on social media too. So if that turns out to be the most effective way, then maybe we would rethink the six mailers.
I don't think there's a problem with the number. I'm just concerned about the span of time.
Yeah, and we would, again, just easy-to-understand pieces of information, really, for lack of a better term, bite-sized. So people can at least try to retain some of the key, important messaging. And starting with pupil services, because we know that that in particular was one that people just really didn't understand the last time around. With that, thank you so much.
Okay, I guess there's no other questions then for Diana? Okay, thank you so much, Diana. Okay, so we're going to move to Agenda Item Four, or I'm sorry, Five. Five and Six are going to be two separate resolutions. So if we have need for discussion, I will ask that after a second on the motion. Keith, Dr. Hiltz, do you have any update before we move to Agenda Item Five?
Yeah, if I could, just to remind the board, so you see the three resolutions. The first two are really approving the language that would appear on the ballot. The third one is saying that you want to send these to the April election. So that's why we have three when we only have two questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so Agenda Item Five. This is the resolution authorizing the school district budget to exceed revenue limit by $4 million for recurring purposes. I am seeking a motion, be it resolved by the School Board of the Wausau School District, Marathon County, Wisconsin, that the revenues included in the school district budget be authorized to exceed the revenue limit specified in Section 121.91 Wisconsin statutes by $4 million, beginning with the 2021-2022 school year, for recurring purposes consisting of expenses related to maintaining educational programs and staffing, providing full pupil services teams at each elementary school, and other safety, operational, and maintenance expenses.
Sure, move.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would like to say a few words.
Okay.
Thank you. So before we vote on this, I have a few comments. I think everyone knows that, you know, the last few times that we've discussed the referendum, I've been against having a referendum in April. And to be honest, last week, while we were all sitting here, I loved last week's presentation. I did. I felt the energy in the room and, you know, what it would mean to the school district if the referendums did pass. I mean, you know, I live for this type of energy. I loved the energy. You know, we heard things about safety, separate cafeterias and the gymnasiums, from kindergartners being able to go from one side of the building to the other side of the building safely. And we also saw that physically, you know, if you looked at the maps of the schools, you could physically see that schools were actually going to increase by two, by two or one-third, you know? And so, you know, those are the schools in need the most. It was Grant, John Muir, and Lincoln. And so I really, really like the plan. Unfortunately, you know, as we did sit here last week, you know, a little bit of sadness. I felt a little bit sadness while we were sitting here because I was thinking, you know, this should have been the plan for November. And if we would have just done it this way for November, I feel like we would have gotten it passed in November, or at least close, you know? And that was the way that it should have gone in November. I want to be very, very clear that I do think that our schools need this. I really appreciate that last week, Dr. Hiltz did say that, you know, our state legislature has made it their habit to say to Wisconsin schools that if we want more funding, we have to do it through referendum. Basically, we're on our own. And I've had a week to think about this. And I was really, really close to changing my vote. But unfortunately, I will have to vote no tonight. And I think that the public needs to know my reasons for voting no. I really do think that we still need to focus on keeping our teachers and our employees and our students safe and learning during the pandemic. You know, get everyone vaccinated this year. And I really can't forget the fact that most people who said that they voted no on this in November, they voted no because they wanted their taxes to go down. Our constituents made their voices heard two months ago, and they didn't want the last referendum. I mean, it was different than this referendum, but they didn't want the last referendum. And I think we need to respect their vote in November. And I really still think that 2022 is the best time to come up with a referendum. It's not this year. The community, you know, people are still unemployed. We're still going through a pandemic. And I really couldn't reconcile the two. When there are people still out there, they're unemployed and struggling to make ends meet, especially under a pandemic, I couldn't reconcile the two. But I do have some asides. It really frustrates me that the reasons why people voted no for the referendum was because they did want their taxes to go down because that isn't something that we have control over. You know, the school district, the school board, we don't have control over that. So I think, you know, for those who do want their taxes to go down, you really do have to pay attention to city and county local government because those are the bodies of government that really do dictate if your taxes go up or down. My second aside is there are people out there who have a chip on their shoulder because of how we voted to start school in the fall. And they're still mad about that. And so out of spite, I have read these online, and I've heard these, that they're going to vote no for the referendum, just out of spite. And today, three of the school board candidates sent a press release out to the media basically saying that this referendum, this one in April, is going to fail because we are not going to change school to go to face-to-face because they haven't heard anything about that. And my reaction, and it's just my reaction, it is not the board's, my reaction is voting no on the referendum to spite us isn't really going to affect us as a board. It only hurts the school and the teachers and the students that everyone says that they love and appreciate so much. Okay? So I need everyone to understand that, that to vote no, to simply spite us because of how we started school in the fall, that doesn't help the community. So I think everyone needs to understand that. And my last aside is I think these two referendums will pass. They will be on the April ballot. And I just want to let my fellow school board colleagues know that however the vote comes out, I will be supportive of it. And, you know, if the referendum does pass in April, I do see this helping out our district very much. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ka. Further discussion on the resolution for the pupil services. I do have a question for clarification, Dr. Hiltz. The language here says providing full pupil services teams at each elementary school. Does this mean that Wausau West and Wausau East will still share a social worker?
I have to look at the staffing numbers. Again, as Angie Lloyd mentioned, we staff based on student need. I'd have to go back and look at specific numbers.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion on this particular resolution?
I think Cassie has something to say.
Okay. Okay. Sure, sure, absolutely. Okay, not hearing anything further, I believe we can proceed with the roll call of vote then.
Yes.
Abstain.
No.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Kat McPhee?
Yes.
Ray Ruth?
Yes.
Lance Stroll?
Abstain.
Lee Wester?
Yes.
Richard Butler?
Yes. Okay, so that resolution passed, six yes, one no, two abstentions. All right, Agenda Item Six. This is the initial resolution authorizing general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $148,800,000. I'm seeking a motion, be it resolved by the School Board of the Wausau School District, Marathon County, Wisconsin, that there shall be issued pursuant to Chapter 67 of the Wisconsin statutes, general obligation bonds in an amount not to exceed $148,800,000 for the public purpose of paying the cost of a school building and facility improvement project consisting of district-wide safety and security, school modernization, building infrastructure, capital maintenance and site improvements, remodeling at the elementary, middle, and high schools, construction of additions at Horace Mann, John Muir, and John Muir Middle Schools, West High School, and Grant, Lincoln, Hawthorne Hills, Maine, Riverview, South Mountain, and Stettin Elementary Schools, construction of a new school forest environmental center, and acquisition of furnishings, fixtures, and equipment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second on that. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. I believe we can proceed with the roll-call vote.
Yes.
Calhoun?
No.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Kat McPhee?
Yes.
Dang Roos?
Yes.
Max Strahl?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Dang Boucher?
Yes.
Christian Butler?
Yes. Okay, that resolution passed, eight yes, one no.